Item is number 10, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 15-1478, block 2109, lot 96, 434 West 162nd Street in the Jumel Terrace Historic District. A transitional rowhouse with Romanesque Revival style and Classical style features, designed by Henry Fouchot and built in 1896. The application is to remove a skylight, install a bulkhead, awning, trellis, and HVAC equipment, raise chimney flues at the roof, and modify masonry openings at the rear facade. And this was read into the record on March 18th, 2014.
Okay, read into the record, therefore we'll be taking testimonies. We'll open the hearing with a motion in a second. Without objection, hearing open. You're on. Thank you.
Jack, please, Commissioners and the waterway preservation staff. We have it before you is 434 West 162nd Street in Jumel Terrace Historic District. The building is located in the block near the southwest corner of the intersection of 162nd Street and Jumel Terrace. For your reference, there are some existing conditions photographs of the building. This proposal has two parts. The first is to construct a rooftop bulkhead, which is visible over the rear facade from Jumel Terrace and Robert Morris Park, as well as St. Nicholas Avenue. It is not visible over the front facade. The second part is to modify openings at the first floor of the rear facade. Here, there's the existing conditions. Here are the proposed conditions, and this is visible from Jumel Terrace. The project architect, Richard Goodstein, is here to further explain the proposal and answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Richard Goodstein, NC2 Architecture. This is my associate, Michael Hansen. Let me just get one under. So after that wonderfully concise introduction, I have much less to say. However, I wanted to talk a little bit about how we arrived at the design of the bulkhead on this townhouse. We started with, yes, we started trying to figure out how to do the bulkhead to a roof deck with little or no visibility. And we did a pretty extensive study and figured out that there was really no area on the roof where we could place a stair bulkhead that would not be visible from the rear side. So we chose to place the bulkhead above the existing stair. It seems to make sense with the sort of townhouse typology that the stair continues up through the building and into the bulkhead at the roof. On the interior, we are replicating the rest of the stairs. Much of this project has to do with preserving the existing building. It's in very good condition. However, on the roof, we're taking a slightly different approach. Interiors coming up, stair is similar to the stairwell all the way down to the basement level. We thought we would use the opportunity of building a bulkhead to bring light into the stairwell. The stairwell, obviously, darkest part of a townhouse. So we built a glass enclosure, closed, of course, on the party wall side, closed on the front side because of mechanical equipment also not visible to the street. Stair comes up, landing, and deck. The design of the bulkhead, metal clad, the glass is covered for both security reasons and for sun shading reasons with a metal screen. We're also proposing a retractable awning. And basically, we thought that because this is a sort of modern idea, occupying a roof is something that was not something when this building was built, was not something that people did. We wanted to give it modern expression, modern materials, modern design. That's about it for the roof. Yes, I think that was my question.
You should take a look at the, just talk about the photo montages.
Sure. Photo montages on sheet number three. The top row shows visibility, essentially the maximum visibility from three locations. The top row is showing the mockup. The bottom row is showing a photo montage built over the mockup. The first photo is from St. Nicholas Avenue. Second photo is from Jumel Terrace. Third photo is from Robert Morris Park.
Okay. Put your name on the record, please, if you're. Okay, so, fine, keep going.
Are there any other rooftop additions on this row or on this block?
There are no other rooftop additions on the block. There are chimneys and other.
But no bulkheads?
No, no bulkheads.
Just point out where the visibility is. I think it's great.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you look on sheet number one.
No, not there, but.
On the rendering, on your board three.
Oh, oh, sure. What you'll see is.
It's white. It's very white. It's not orange, it's white.
By image, by image.
Okay, sure. From the St. Nicholas side, you will see it to the, it's very hard to see, through the trees that are almost toward the end of the row of townhouses.
The point to the center.
It's right there.
I have the renderings.
Sure. And then on the rear of the building from the street, you can see a little bit of it peeking out.
A little, what do you mean, a little bit of it peeking out?
Right here.
That's not a little.
Okay, rendering.
Why do you say that's a little bit of it peeking out?
Yes, and then we render it on, this is from the.
Rendering, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Which part? Are we looking at the backside?
Yeah, we're looking at the upstairs. And we're not showing the awning in the, there.
So how do you respond to the fact that it's not a little bit peeking out? It's extremely visible. How do you respond to that and why that's appropriate?
Well, the fact that it's visible, there's not much you can do about that. As I said, we started this with a review of where we put the bulkhead so that we had other ideas about, you know, locations in, it has to be the top floor of the building, also when you put a stair, had other ideas where it could be. And there's nowhere on this roof where it wouldn't be highly visible.
But now, you do have extra space in your bulkhead, you know? So if you, it could have been a not as long bulkhead.
Yeah, yes.
And it could have been sunken. Couldn't it have been sunken too?
Well, let me address both of those. So the size of, the size of the landing. Landing is slightly bigger than a landing would be for maneuverability. This is a roof deck, they can bring furniture up there, outdoor couch table. Need a bit of maneuverability. From a design point of view, because of the proximity of the bulkhead to the rear chimney, we have to raise the rear chimney. So from a design perspective, we were trying to have the glass bulkhead engage the chimney because otherwise, if we were to pull it back, you'll still see a big brick wall of a chimney there. So the mass would be there. We thought it was more interesting to have the two elements sort of interlock with each other. And the height as well. We're assuming eight-foot ceiling inside, so it's more or less minimal. And for the deck, the tough thing that we always have with townhouses is that you do have to raise it up because of the slope of the roof. We are using, instead of using a sort of donage system with steel beams, we're using a pedestal system for the deck, which brings it down as close as possible to the roof level. That establishes our landing height inside the bulkhead, which then, when you take the clear height inside the bulkhead into a kennel, gets us as low as possible.
Okay.
And dropping it into the roof line more? You're sitting on the roof now. What if you dropped it down?
Structurally, you could have done something to lower.
Oh, drop the entire roof?
Yes, or the whole thing comes down.
Or at least in that area, whatever.
I suppose it's technically feasible. It's very difficult because of roof drainage. If you.
No.
I mean, the way.
Just do it differently. Okay.
You're talking, essentially creating a pit.
No, I'm saying there are different ways of doing it, but yes, you can do the structure, change the structure of the roof so that this, the part where you're putting your addition is sunken in.
Sure.
And then you build, your roof still slopes and it's still whatever around it, but.
What's underneath it?
Oh, you're talking about just the bulkhead portion of it?
Except your bulkhead is as wide as the wall.
I'm sorry?
Do you have the right heights below to do that?
Actually, for what she's talking about, it's not an issue of height because you're talking about just the bulkhead areas or above the stair. Yes, it could be lowered a bit, but you're still going to have the issue.
And you'd have to step up.
Where you step out is going to, and that's, and that's one of the worst parts of this building. So, you know, we also looked at what happens if we slope the bulkhead, but that doesn't help us at all because we'd be sloping the portion of the bulkhead.
But you don't see.
That you don't see.
Long as to.
Turn the stairs to go the other.
Perpendicular?
Kind of split the slope of the stair on the, yeah, that one. The stair to the, yes, going that way.
Yes, we would have to push it all the way back to get the clearance underneath, underneath where this stair comes up.
No, 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 the one that's going to the roof.
Yeah, you're saying take that stair and mirror it back.
Just split, you know, I mean, you go up four feet and then boom, you're going to turn.
Well, we did, we did look at that. As I said, we tried a lot of configurations of this, even moving into here. We couldn't move too close.
Well, it doesn't look like you've done it because otherwise that would dis, you wouldn't need all of the bulkhead.
No, no, what I'm trying to say is that we've tested it out and you do have pretty considerable visibility, even, even in this area of the roof. It's just this, it's, you know, it was a surprise to us even that this roof is so incredibly exposed.
Is it only visible from over the rear facades?
Yes.
Only from any of all the things?
Rear facades, you do not see any.
Never see it above the corners of the.
You do not, and not only that, we've walked up and down the street. We've walked all the way out to here, the disgrates down. We've walked all the way out to the other end of the street. We've looked at it from every possible angle. We did also together with Emma.
Okay, keep going.
The rear wall. Rear wall's very simple. We are, one of the few parts of this building that's not really intact historically is the kitchen at the basement of the rear and that's getting a complete makeover. It's a very low ceiling back there, as you often have in townhouses. We want to open up the back wall to a greater extent than it currently is. Currently, the back wall has one sad-looking patio door and one swing door and a number of rolled-down security gates. We're proposing to remove the security gates, remove the small window that goes to a small power.
Do you have the drawing?
Yes, we did. It's not, oh, sorry. Yes, I thought that one was. Ah, there we go. So the proposal, I'll put it over here next to the photo room. We're proposing to regularize this facade, put a large glass unit, double doors right at the center of it. We're putting a security gate in front of it that takes its design cues from other security gates that are on the facades of the building, so a more traditional wrought iron type of gate. The middle above, we're proposing a steel middle, as you often see on the rears of, on the rear of these buildings.
Okay, thank you very much. Further questions? We have testimony now, we'll go to that, and we'll come back to you. Pamela Palanque North.
Hi, I am Pamela Palanque North. I am a member of Community Board 12. I'm on the Executive Committee, I'm the immediate past Chair. I own a house on West 162nd Street facing 434. I am the Vice President of the Morris Jumel Mansion, so a lot of hats. Primarily, I'm here to call to the attention of the Commission the fact that Community Board 12 is holding its general meeting, which is a mandated meeting according to City Charter, tonight, and that the resolution that you may have before you was issued by the Executive Committee, and according to City Charter, committees do not have the power or authority to decide anything. It has to go before the full Board. So I would just ask you to either hold open or table, whatever language is proper, this particular application until the Community Board has an opportunity to discuss it tonight. In addition, with my hat on as Vice President of Morris Jumel Mansion, which has exposure, a lot of exposures as well as Jumel Terrace and Sylvan Terrace, which is also a historic site, it's the restored carriage houses. And the mansion was one of the locations that George Washington resided at during the American Revolution. So it has a lot of visitors, there's quite an impact from what people see in the area. They come to see the area. So I would like an opportunity for them to be able to weigh in on this particular proposal that comes before you. So that's why we would like additional time on this matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to discuss the Executive Committee letter or not?
Oh, well, only to say that that will, that letter or resolution crafted by the Committee is actually, they have, the Chair of that Committee, Wayne Benjamin, has accepted a friendly amendment, will be ratified tonight, which will change the language of that resolution. And I would like fair opportunity for that to come before the Board for consideration.
Understood. We'll hear the rest of the testimony and then before, then we'll have a discussion and then we'll.
Thank you very much.
You'll be here to hear what, how we're addressing that concern, legitimate concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Bassett.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Bassett. I am homeowner on West 162nd Street. I join in the comms that Pamela North just made. I, in fact, learned about this proposal only this morning. And it is very concerning to, as a homeowner, actually on the same side of the street as 434. It's a uniform facade all the way across. There's no additions on any of the existing roofs. And so I would be concerned about this one and also possible similar proposals that might come up along the way. I think it would change the aspect of the block. A mention has been made about that this is visible from the park. The park is, in fact, Morris Jumel Mansion is the park. And so the fact it's not like a dog walk, it's a historic site and a very important part of our community. I could also say that last night, there was a meeting of the Morris Jumel Neighborhood Association, and none of the members were aware that this was in the offing. And I can't speak on behalf of the association because it hasn't been discussed, but we would like the opportunity to consider the plans and to express our formal provision.
Okay, thank you very much. Krista Bell-Goff.
Krista Bell-Goff, for the Society for the Architecture of the City. This rooftop addition would be highly visible, more visible than is usually allowed against a skyline with no other rooftop additions. But it is of special concern where it is visible from. The garden, from which the photos of the mockup were taken, is the garden of the oldest house in Manhattan, the Morris Jumel Mansion of 1765, which naturally is an individual and national historic landmark. This large rooftop addition is in your face, not only from the garden, but from the windows of the octagonal parlor and other rooms used by George Washington in 1776 to direct the Battle of Harlem Heights, and again, later in 1790 for a victory dinner when he entertained John and Abigail Adams, Thomas Jefferson, and Alexander Hamilton. When I stopped by to confirm this last Sunday, the house was full of reverent tourists and the custodians who let us in that I talked to wanted to know, how could it be allowed to build this thing on the roof of 162nd Street? I said it hasn't been allowed yet. Morris Jumel no longer has its original 130 acres, but the view northwest into the historic district, which presumably was designated for that reason, is still pristine 19th century New York. Perhaps it is in the public interest for it to stay that way.
Thank you very much. Barbara Zay from.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. While HDC finds the rear alterations in this application to be acceptable, what is being called a bulkhead on top of the building reads as a rather large rooftop addition that would be highly visible from multiple angles around the block. It would represent a significant addition of height and bulk in a material that is inappropriate to a building of this type and age and to the district as a whole. The proposed bulkhead houses offset of stairs, but since the HVAC equipment will be located elsewhere and no other function has been proposed for this space, HDC asks that the height be lowered and more consideration be made to blend it better with the existing architecture of this charming row. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other testimony on this? Yes, sir. Come on, there.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Adams. I'm here really to testify about this rooftop addition in regard to all that Mrs. Goff and others have already so eloquently said. You know, this is the oldest surviving house in Manhattan, which was also the first house in the nation that we know of to have a two-story portico and one of the first instances, according to Fitz Kimball, of an octagonal-shaped room in the nation. And so this is a highly significant place in an ensemble of late 19th century Neoclassical houses. And so this is something worth preserving, and more importantly, it's something that I think the Commission should consider not approving because of the kind of precedent that it would represent. It's a fairly recent thing, this thing I've been seeing this afternoon of people taking houses and apartments and combining them together to make them into one. Whenever these sorts of things happen, they only encourage other people to do them as well. And so what you do here is so terribly, terribly important. So I would say, even without the input of the local Community Board or the Neighborhood Association, that this should be disapproved. Further, I'd like to, beyond my testimony, to take this opportunity as one of the staunchest critics of the Commission over the past thirty odd years, to say that in the papers we've all read, that it's likely that Mr. Tierney will be departing. And I would like to say on the record that this causes some dismay for many of us because we don't know what will get in his place. And through an accident of history, he has presided over a commission which has designated probably more buildings than any commission prior to his coming along. And a lot of this had to do, of course, with that great duration of the term of Mayor Bloomberg. But more importantly, it had to do with the kind of remarkable leadership taken by Mr. Tierney. And so I would like to congratulate Mr. Tierney and. Thank him.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Adams, thank you very much. Oh, no. Graciously, graciously accepted.
Hi, my name is Jesse Darnell. First-time caller, longtime listener. I'm speaking today as a resident of Washington Heights. I just want to say that the Jumel Historic District is an incredibly special place as you come off a very gritty stretch of St. Nicholas Avenue and up some steps onto a cobblestone street and 19th century streetscape. And I think this addition will have a negative effect on both the well-preserved district and the gardens of Jumel Mansion. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Other testimony? Comment, response to anything that was said in the testimony? Anything more you want to add? If so, right up to the front. We'll keep, the record will definitely be kept open thirty days, and we'll determine in a moment. My strong suspicion is we will take no action today because I, but I want to, obviously, this discussion will bear that out. So we'll have, A, the opportunity to receive additional comment for the record that you've described and has been described in the testimony, and B, to possibly address other issues depending on this discussion. Joan, please.
I just want to say that under, under no circumstances could I approve this addition, this bulkhead addition on the top of this building for all the reasons that were mentioned about how sacred it is and the history that it involves. And I thank the people that testified about it. I'm okay with the, with the rear facade because it's not visible from the public way, but I feel that the bulkhead is just totally inappropriate for this building and where it's being viewed from.
As we've seen with a lot of other projects where you're the first guy to have a rooftop addition, it's a harder, it's kind of too bad that, for your sake, that you're in a virgin territory here, but the fact that this row not only is in a significant place, but is also unmodified at this time makes it all the harder for us, I think, to approve a quite visible rooftop addition. You certainly haven't made it any easier on yourself by making the, by making the bulkhead larger than it needs to be, longer than it needs to be, wider than it needs to be, perhaps not a whole lot higher than it needs to be, but we've seen, we've seen things ranging from Bilco doors on the roof to sloped bulkheads to, you know, you have the opportunity to put in winders here. You don't need a double-height space. You can get all the light down below with skylights and/or a glass roof to the bulkhead. I think that there's a lot that can be done to this that would mitigate its impact, and I can't say that even that would be okay, but certainly it would be in the right direction.
Chris.
Michael said it well, it's much too large.
And I agree with those comments, and I just want to add that lowering the bulkhead into the roof is something we also see very often. It reduces the height significantly.
Yeah, I think that there are two questions. One is, can you have a bulkhead here at all that could be approvable? And the second is, well, I guess the second is how to modify, I mean, whether or not you have it, and then if you have it, what does it look like? And if you have it, I think it would have to be really small, greatly reduced. The footprint would be smaller, and it would have to be a lot less visible. But having said that, I'm not sure that you can actually design something that actually works here for me.
Am I last? No.
No, there's some more. Okay. So I want to take a slightly different point of view. I think there must be thousands of acres of unused rooftops in New York City, and I think it's a shame. So when I see somebody coming to want to use a rooftop for open space, I'm sympathetic automatically. Sympathetic, that doesn't mean it's appropriate yet, but I'm certainly sympathetic to the use of a rooftop. So the question here is how and what's the context and all the other approvable issues that we traditionally deal with. And I just want to make a few, a few points. I don't think, I asked the question and then the answer was, this is never visible above the facade of the building, the corners, the highly articulated. It's only viewed over the rear portion of the building, which is a motley arrangement of different materials, it appears in the photographs. Yes, it's visible from a very important house, nobody would denigrate that, but I'm not sure that it, that it really changes the essential view of what's seen of that important house or even the vista so much. So maybe it is too big. I think it's elegantly designed, let's at least say that, and the rear facade is perfectly appropriate. So the only thing that's, that's questionable in my mind, again, is perhaps, is this thing just a little bit too big? just a little bit too big? I just wanted to get that sort of on the, on the, on the record.
Libby.
Yeah, to me, it's, it's much more than a bulkhead that's being added here, and it is extremely visible, not only from this designated site, but also within the context of all the other houses on the row. I think that's really where I find it most problematic.
Michael?
Yeah. I kind of proved the treatment of the rear facade. When we did the restoration on the Morris Jumel Mansion in 1990, I recall going up into the upper rooms and looking out around the vista, and it is actually quite remarkable. And I think that, that this bulkhead, or any bulkhead on that row, would have a significant impact on those vistas from the Morris Jumel Mansion, which really is one of the most important, most important buildings in New York City. So I, I think like Joan, I will never be able to approve anything that's on that roof that is visible.
Okay, definitely no action, serious reservations. Yes.
I also.
I don't want to act separately.
I'd like to second Michael Henry Adams' statement.
All right. Thank you. I think no action now, I don't want to do it piecemeal. I think there is the back support for the rear, but I'd rather have the whole thing put over, not acted upon. And I, everyone's heard the testimony and will await, the record will be kept open as I've described. And with that, we'll close this hearing today with a motion and second without objection. And if you all would stay a few minutes, John wants the Commission members, thank you very much, day is actually over.